Nice letter, yes.
Okay.
Please rise. Heavenly Father be with us this morning as we continue to help guide this great institution. Be with the Osterhout family this morning as we pay tribute to her memory and to her great contribution that she gave to this college, to her coworkers and colleagues, and to her students. Surround her family with the love and protection that only you can give and let them know that they are never walking alone. We ask this in your heavenly name.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dr. Law, we have some resolutions.
We do, sir. Could I ask that Dr. Hildegard Shirley join me with her many supporters and friends? Perfect timing. Come on, you stand next to me over here, okay? Geez, this looks like Occupy. This is quite a Cornella here.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, whereas Dr. Hildegard Shirley began her work at St. Petersburg College when she was a student in 1976 and continued working as an OPS employee in student activities until she obtained a position in 1984; and whereas Dr. Shirley has been a tireless worker, always willing to assist students with their educational development; she has often arrived early and departed late in her quest to meet her students' educational needs; and whereas Dr. Shirley valued education, having earned a bachelor's degree in Bible and a master's degree in Christian education from Bethany Bible College and Theological Seminary in Alabama and a doctorate in education from Trinity College and University in South Dakota; and whereas Dr. Shirley found tutoring and witnessing students' growth and progress to be the most rewarding and exciting aspects of her work at St. Petersburg College; and whereas Dr. Shirley has nurtured the Midtown campus's entire student population from 15 students at the center's inception to the most recent annual enrollment of approximately 900 students; and whereas Dr. Shirley has a warm, welcoming, and generous spirit, we wish her happiness in her retirement as she travels and enjoys her family and friends and as she continues her great work through her church and other community organizations by tutoring, mentoring, and advocating on behalf of students in the greater St. Petersburg community. Now therefore be it resolved that the St. Petersburg College Board of Trustees and the entire college community hereby recognize and appreciate the outstanding contributions to the college and the community by Dr. Hildegard Shirley and extend to her our best wishes for enjoyment throughout the years ahead. Said resolution adopted and approved by this Board of Trustees, St. Petersburg College, on the 20th day of March 2012. Here, here.
Good morning. And this is a first. I just want to say thanks to all of you, each and every one who has helped me along this journey and who has always been by my side here. Whenever I've asked for anything for the students at Midtown or wherever I was, I was always given the aid and assistance. And trust me, I'm not leaving. I will still be around. Thank you all very much.
I'd like to ask Dr. Alfredis to do and Dean Sharon Settlein to join us up here for this presentation, Dr. Confleet Carney. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, events surrounding the death and the legal matters that have to do with Maria Osterhout that keep her family from being with us today, okay? But we'll adopt the resolution and we'll take care that those are transmitted to members of her family. Whereas Maria Louise Osterhout served St. Petersburg College with distinction as an associate professor in business technologies from August 2001 until her untimely death on February 25, 2012. I'm sorry, I should have invited everybody. Let me start over. Whereas Maria Louise Osterhout served St. Petersburg College with distinction as an associate professor in business technologies from August 2001 until her untimely death on February 25, 2012; and whereas Ms. Osterhout was observed in the classrooms at St. Petersburg College where her kindness and her smile were always present along with her obvious love for teaching and learning, her devotion to students, and her fairness and honesty with her colleagues and coworkers; and whereas Ms. Osterhout, throughout the time she was associated with the college, placed students' interests above all other concerns, always counseling and encouraging them to strive for excellence. She based her instruction on skill sets she knew students would need to secure meaningful employment; and whereas Ms. Osterhout was a caring and loving lady who displayed a genuine interest in her colleagues, often greeting them with affectionate hugs before inquiring as to their health and well-being; and whereas Ms. Osterhout was a gifted artist who painted and played classical and jazz piano. Her creative and colorful web designs have benefited the college and her church, Mount Olive African Methodist Episcopal Church in Clearwater; and whereas Ms. Osterhout was a scholar who kept up to date with breaking technology. She had earned a bachelor's degree in music from Jersey City State College and a master's degree in instructional technology from the University of South Florida; and whereas Ms. Osterhout will be remembered for her zeal for sharing not only the theory and knowledge of computer technology and web design, but also the application of theory and design through creative projects which were delivered with excellence. Among these projects were the redesign of the Tarpon Springs Campus website and the initial website designed for the veterans' legacies at the Billerakis Archives on the Tarpon Springs Campus. And whereas Maria Osterhout will be greatly missed by her St. Petersburg college students and colleagues as we mourn her passing from our daily lives, her spirit will continue to live on for many contributions that she brought into our daily lives. Now therefore be it resolved that the St. Petersburg College Board of Trustees and the total college community honor the life of Maria Louise Osterhout and her contributions to St. Petersburg College and extend our deepest sympathy to her family and friends. Adopted this 20th day of March 2012.
Thank you, Dr. Law. I would also like to share with the college family and with the family through video, Dr. O's family through video, that we are undertaking additional initiatives at the campus and college-wide. And one of those will be a scholarship in Maria Osterhout's Memorial Scholarship Fund. We're working with the St. Pete College Foundation to establish this scholarship. The scholarship will be established for students who are taking courses in the web design, computer web programming analysis, the website design and management, digital arts and media, and interactive web AS degree programs at St. Petersburg College having a minimum GPA of 2.5. We will be publishing, of course, this scholarship fund through the blue and white and throughout the college. And we're hoping that faculty members all over the college will contribute to this fund so that we can memorialize Professor Osterhout through students that are in her discipline area. In addition to the scholarship fund, we are also in honor of her love for gardening. We are working on our campus to establish a garden and a memorial area for seeding for her and in her name. And we have received a call from the Palm Harbor Lions Club because of the article expressing her love and kindness in the newspaper. They contacted the campus and they will be buying, purchasing a tree in her name, a Florida flowering red bud tree. And we're working with our facilities organization, with our campus FGO, and with the biology department to lay out a nice garden for her which will be placed on our campus near where her office was. I ask for your help in supporting the scholarship fund so that we could continue to honor and memorialize her. Thank you.
Well, Maria was only a couple of months from retirement. So if this were the May meeting and she was standing here, we would give her a round of applause. Thank you all for your many shows of support. As we watched the events unfold on a weekend and others, I can't tell you how supported I felt for our students by literally the opening of classes on Monday. We had contacted every student. We had a game plan in place to keep them whole. We had counseling and support systems in place. It spoke volumes about what we do. Thank you. Thank you all.
May I have a motion to adopt the resolutions, please?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if you would, for one second indulgence.
Please.
I'd just like to say, Dr. Carney, thank you so much for taking the lead role in helping the Osterhout family. I would be willing to donate to that fund if you would also add any student who has survived domestic violence is eligible for that scholarship as well because that's truly what this was and we need to recognize it for what it is.
It's a good idea.
And we need to make sure that people that have survived this and have risen and is taking it on very heavily. And people that have survived domestic violence are, you know, truly have gone through a lot. So we just, if you would add that, if you and Francis would figure out how to do that, then I would be more than happy to donate to that fund. As for Dr. Shirley back there, I've known her since I was seven and a half years old and I've never seen her without having a lot to say. So she was choked up. She has been, when I started playing little league football, she was already at the organization with her son. She's a great lady and a great loss to this college. And I'm sure that she will still be around, just like she said. She, her kids left the organization, the football organization, probably three, four years before I did. And she was still there giving everybody trouble. She was everybody's mother. So thank you for all you have done, if you're still back there, Dr. Shirley.
Thank you, Mr. Gibbons. We'll move on to Agenda Item Three. There are a lot of things that go on in this college over the many campuses. And I'm going to talk about the most recent thing that I was at, which was last night at the Palladium. And I'll keep this brief. But my comments are going to be focused mainly on the amazing job that the staff for this college did in pulling off an event that was really, really big. Really, really big. And I just want to commend Susan and Paul Wilborn. I don't believe Paul or Kathy Odow or Corey Adler, any of those, those folks are here. But there was a group effort to put on Billy Joel last night at the Palladium. The front page of The Times this morning, if you saw it. And I had occasion to run into Paul Wilborn on Friday evening. And he was talking about the chain of events that happened leading up to last night, including when they had the opening day of selling tickets and people were lining up at the Palladium at 2:00 in the morning, students, to get their tickets. And once the ticket office opened at 9:00, they sold out by 11:00 and it was flawless. And last night, being there, the entire event was flawless. And what a great way to showcase this college, to showcase the integration of the arts into our students' success and to have the Palladium be such an integral part of that evening. I know that Bob Fine and Devron were there last night, of course, Dr. Law, and many of you. So it was a really, really fun night. And just, I felt very, very proud and very proud of the great work and effort that the staff all did in putting that together and showcasing this institution in a flawless way. So many, many kudos. Thank you very much. Other board members. Mr. Fine, anything from you?
No.
Mr. Burke?
Yes. And I want to thank you, Mr. Chair, for your beautiful prayer and your remembrance of Maria during the prayer and the words said in the resolution. It's, I think it's important that we, and I think part, the best tribute we can give to people is memory is to keep it alive and to talk about them every once in a while. And this past month, we lost two retired faculty members from the Gibbs Campus who both were instructors of mine while I was at St. Petersburg College. John Sackett, who taught accounting. And for those of you who have an accounting, Teresa, did you have Mr. Sackett too? But those of you who have a degree in accounting know that accounting is based on your first two courses that you take at the freshman and sophomore level. And everything in accounting is based on those two courses. If you don't understand those courses, you'll fail on accounting. And Mr. Sackett was very dedicated, a no-nonsense person who, there's a lot of things we talk about today, Dr. Law, as far as success for our students. He paved a clear direction of how to succeed in his class and he expected you to keep with that direction. And he just passed away just a few weeks back. And he was a fairly longtime faculty member here at our college. And the other person who was Barbara Hall. And Ms. Hall was probably one of the most loved faculty members in the entire college. And we used to have a tradition at graduation where the most senior faculty would sit on the front row. And the last three years of Mrs. Hall's tenure with the college, I think she was the first seat on the first row, the ultimate seat of honor. And she taught speech. And she does not taught speech. She made sure that students followed a formula, a preparation and organization. She says, "There's no such thing as confidence. Confidence comes with organization and preparation. It doesn't come with anything else." And she taught that in a, much like Mr. Sackett, a no-nonsense approach where, and the fundamentals that you learn in that class and in the speech class we have here at St. Petersburg College is one which people take with them the rest of their lives. And to those Gators in the crowd, Ms. Hall took a group of us from, she was a sponsor of Five Row Pie, which was the speech honorary, up to the University of Florida to the Gator Invitational Debate Tournament. And it was not only debate, it was extemporaneous and different type of competitions. And there were, I would say, probably 30 colleges that were there. There was only two community colleges in the group, us and one other. And yet colleges like Emory University represented there. And we competed very well. And matter of fact, I won a little trophy there, an extemporaneous. But I think that was a part of her character that she saw us all as not just some junior college students. We can compete against anyone with the skills that she taught us. And so I just want to, the minutes reflect that this college took the time to honor both of these, the legacy of both of these individuals who have had such a meaningful impact on students for many decades and are exemplary models for what a faculty member is all about. So to Mrs. Hall, Ms. Hall and Mr. Sackett, did you have Ms. Hall by any chance, Joe? So you know what I'm talking about. That's a great legacy. So we pay tribute to you and we honor your memory.
Thank you, Mr. Burke. I had Mr. Sackett as well. And I agree about his straightforward personality and I found it interesting that I did not know until I read his obituary that he was at Normandy on D-Day.
I didn't know that either.
That might have a little something to do with his, with his great character. But anyway, thank you, Mr. Burke. Mr. North, anything from you?
No comment.
Mr. Gibbons?
I didn't have the young lady you talked about who's a speech teacher. But if you won an award, she must have been pretty good.
Especially at the University of Florida.
You probably choked up that day.
Anything else, sir? Thank you. Dr. Law?
Thank you very much. I will take, I've got a full report at the end. But a week ago, Sunday, I had to be in New York for some personal business during the week and was able to juggle the dates of my trip and was able to join our Student Madrigal Singers at Carnegie Hall. And I had forgotten how really impressive it is to go to Carnegie Hall. Our students were great. I had breakfast with them Sunday morning and we chatted about their experiences. And once again, Dr. Vernon Toranto and his dean and everyone else. When we have opportunities, as you've mentioned, Mr. Burke, for our students to get out and see themselves with other college students and to assess the quality of the work we do, we always feel good. They always feel good. They were, they were just wonderful. And the performance was really quite spectacular. So nice opportunity for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Onto Agenda Item Number Four. I'd like a motion to approve the minutes of our February 21st meeting, please.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Onto Agenda Item Five, Monthly Reports. Mr. Lang, anything from you?
Just briefly, Mr. Chair. I met with Mr. Burke and Ms. Gardner. We're working on the process of the rules presentation to the board as the board asks. And that's going well, I think.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Gardner, anything from you?
Mr. Chair, I don't have a report this month.
Thank you. Dr. Nikotera, good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Mr. Chair. Good morning, members. This morning I prepared a slide and I'll tell you, I am leading the competition for the briefest slide this year.
It's evaluation season.
But anyways, to get to the matter at hand, I hope what I prepared for you is some information that you can put in the back of your minds and may be useful to you when you're out in the community. So I have two sets of data for you. One is about outcomes of health programs and the other one is about applications. And as you can see, the first piece, there is success rate of our health education program courses. And our students pass those courses at an 89% rate, which is really a great number. And one of the important things to mention about that is that students coming to us are well-prepared. They're coming out of the gen ed area ready for the health program so that we can achieve a number like that. Since we are a workforce program, it's important that our students get jobs. And as you can see here, our students graduating right out the gate, more than 95% of them are getting jobs right away. And that's another excellent number considering the job market today. And I know we all hear that healthcare, there's jobs in healthcare. And there is a lot of truth to that. But even healthcare jobs are difficult to find today. So I think graduates coming out with a 95% job rate is excellent. The second piece or the bottom of the slide here is, over the past two and a half years, we've seen about a 40% increase in the number of applicants to health programs. What everybody reads in the newspaper, what everybody sees online that the jobs are in healthcare, they apply to the health program. So you can see last year, we had 2,169 applicants to all of the health programs. What that boils down for us is that for each, on an average, we have three applicants for every seat that we have at the health education program, of every health education program. So the competition level out there is pretty significant and has been for the past year. Can I answer any questions for anyone?
Thank you, sir. I'm sorry, Mr. Gibbons?
Very quickly. Dr. Nikotera, you and I had a conversation about the minority recruitment program or something that you guys were doing? How's that going and where are we in that process?
We're about to recommend to Dr. Law some changes in our admission policies and our criteria. Currently, in the selective admission programs, we go by GPA and course completion. We would like to add some other factors that students have experience in healthcare or have other types of experience that would add to the point count, giving them a greater opportunity to enter into the program. So we had a task force of faculty members and administrators that are complete and we will be giving that recommendation to Dr. Law shortly.
That won't water down the type of applicants that you get?
I don't believe it will because I, I'm of the belief that to be a good healthcare practitioner, you don't have to be an A student. And I think there's a lot of other skills that healthcare practitioners need besides having good, I mean, good grades are important in having that skill. But I think there's interpersonal skills that are necessary to be good practitioners. So I think we need to begin to look more at some of those factors when admitting students. Thank you. Sure, you're welcome.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Vidado?
Good morning. Good morning. Wanted to give you a little update on a program that we started two years ago, a four-year program in biology that's housed at the Clearwater Campus. I think you can see from the slide, when we started out with 36 students, we really didn't anticipate that we would have 343 students. At this point, we did somewhat underestimate the market. But the reason the program is attractive to students is it is a STEM program and it leads to jobs. It's the gateway into medical school, dental school, pharmaceutical school. And it also leads to jobs in clinical research, different government agencies, wastewater treatment, environmental biology, conservation, and all those kind of things as well. The advantage of having such a large number of students is that we can now begin to develop some tracks that help students emphasize their particular interest. I would compare it to, not having a background in biology, compare it to something like a business degree. And on business degrees, you can emphasize marketing or you can emphasize finance or other areas. They're all business degrees. And the same way with biology. We're developing a biotechnology emphasis, a biomedical emphasis, and an emphasis on ecology and organismal biology. And I hope that within a short time, a couple of years, I'll be able to come back to you and provide you with a list of successful graduates and the careers that they've pursued. But at this time, we're very pleased with the growth of the program and it's doing very well. You have any questions for me?
Questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Dr. White? Good morning.
Good morning. I'm here to talk to you today about the St. Petersburg Gibbs Campus.
I'm here to talk to you today about the St. Petersburg Gibbs Campus Student Government Association. We're starting to wind down the inaugural year of a special student empowerment initiative where for the first time ever, our student government organizations have been given direct responsibility for the management of some of their student activities fees. And as you might imagine, this has turned out to be just what it was intended to be, a time of leadership development for our students. But today I want to speak of this mostly from my vantage point, from the vantage point of campus leadership. This has been a growth experience for me, too. At the St. Pete Gibbs Campus, I am so very, very grateful for our group. Embarking on this new journey obviously brought some initial uncertainty. Were our students ready for this? In particular, the SGA officers who just happened to get elected last year? Would they have the time, the energy, the dedication needed for this first year, making sure we get the first year done right? How would other segments of campus be involved and how would they react? To these challenges and every other, this St. Pete Gibbs group of officers, we call them our E-Board, have performed most admirably. President Denny Ann Grant and her group have worked tirelessly and for untold hours in creating honorable processes and procedures. And these are now firmly in place for other E-Boards to follow. On the upper left-hand side of the slide, copied, copied from their most recent presentation to Dr. Law's team, is a summary of the St. Pete Gibbs Group's overarching concerns. Their concern about student retention, student participation in campus life, leadership development, support of college-wide initiatives, not being just looking at their own campus, and enhancement of the overall college experience, especially through clubs and organizations. On the lower right-hand side of the slide is a picture of just one of a number of forms that this group created from scratch. They wanted to have a rubric so that they could make sure that in all of their deliberations, they were even-handed and fair and treated everyone the same inconsistently. On the lower left-hand side of the slide, in their own words, is a summary of this first year experience. And all the while, these students have been a complete joy for Associate Provost Tyrone Clinton and me. They've taken their jobs seriously, they've worked well together, they've enlisted support and participation from all corners of the campus. They've demonstrated flexibility and accommodation and grace when presented with changes. Obviously, there were some changes along the way in this first year. They're respectful, they're confident, and they're honorable. They've proved to be professionals and they make me very proud. Dr. Law, sometimes you refer to experiences in your presidency days that rank in your top five. Clearly, this for me. Watching and working with this group of officers and other SGA members easily ranks in my top five experiences as a provost, and I will always be grateful to them. And likewise, to their leader, Student Life and Leadership Coordinator Davey Gill, he is their rock. And for him, I am very grateful, too. I just wanted to share that with you today.
Thank you very much. Questions? Thank you, Dr. White. Ms. Rubel?
Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. I'd like to continue my introduction of career service staff to you this morning with a little more information about us as a group. As you can see from the slide, career staff have a tendency to come to the college and stay here for a very long time. Thirty percent of our ranks have been here already more than twenty years. We are highly credentialed in the area of the professional and trade certificates that I have listed here. This is really a condensed list. When I surveyed career staff, I had so many responses that there was no way I could fit them all on a slide. So I was tasked with picking perhaps not necessarily those that are more significant, but those that are higher in number. We have a lot of folks with these professional trades, certificates, and licenses. And we also have many in our ranks with degrees and diplomas. I have to confess, I need to make a change on the fly this morning because with Dr. Shirley's retirement, our one doctorate has now left our ranks. But we were very proud to, to have a person with a doctorate in, among our ranks. Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, we will now move on to Agenda Item Seven, New Business, Student Success and Achievement. Dr. Carney?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Good morning.
Dr. Law, my colleagues here in the audience. Mr. Chairman, I got to tell you, I'm very excited to share with you this morning a very interesting and a very insightful project. And that project being the African-American male reach-out initiative, to reach out to this specific group for, with the goals of increasing their retention, somebody mentioned that this morning, as well as their academic outcomes. And while this initiative was college-wide in scope, what I'm going to share with you this morning are the actions taken, the lessons learned, some of the outcomes and where we are going from here at the Tarpon Springs Campus. This initiative was special in at least three ways. One, we wanted to reach out to these young men in a more personal way, through a phone call, through voice-to-voice, through face-to-face encounter with them, as opposed to an email or a letter. Secondly, we wanted to involve our faculty in the classroom that the students were taking their classes, to get their input and to pinpoint the status of the students at that point in time. Now, how do we do that? We did that through a very simple survey that was developed in collaboration with the faculty. Four questions. Is a student attending class, yes or no? Is a student completing and turning in their homework assignments, yes or no? Are the students passing on their tests and quizzes, yes or no? Are the pass, are the scores increasing in trend or decreasing in trend? And those four questions were developed by a faculty member and it made a big difference in involving the faculty member in that. But the third reason that this was special, in my mind, was it was huge in terms of our going-forward strategy, college-wide, to connect the teaching and learning environment with the out-of-class support environment. And to strengthen and build on and learn more about how we can work as a college and as a campus team, to learn what our students do in terms of behavior and how to respond when we connect that environment. And it was huge in that regards. Let me share with you some of the results we got. In the cohort that we're dealing with, it had twenty-five students. And based on the results from the faculty, we divided those students into two groups. Group one, students who were having difficulties and needed out-of-classroom support. Group two, students who were doing well, and we took the time to reach out to them as well, to acknowledge that they were doing well and to encourage them to continue to do well. Now, this is some of the data that I've collected here to show the results, and we're not happy with some of the results and we're happy with some of the results. The number of touches, I was very interested in how many touches did we have for each group. And you see there for the group needing help, two-point-four on average touches per group, phone calls, voicemails, face-to-face meetings. And for the students who didn't need the help at that point, one-point-five. And that was a trend I expected to see, and it was after the fact that I actually saw that trend. The grade point average, the range for the students needing help, we're not happy with that. Maximum grade was a two-point-zero. But the grade point range for the students from group two, one-point-zero to eight-point, three-point-eight-two, we're very happy with that outcome. And most importantly, the retention. Out of the ten students that were in group one needing difficulty, eight of those students are enrolled in the spring of two thousand twelve and are continuing their education. We're happy with that. And of course, fifteen of fifteen in group two are back in school in the spring of two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve. One of the lessons learned I want to touch on was that, second from the bottom there, students, some students receptive to limited help. In our case, that manifested itself in several forms, one being, we would call the students on the phone and they would say, yes, you've already called me, there's no need to call me again. Or they may say, we're busy, I'm busy right now, I can't come in for advising or I can't come in for tutoring and working several jobs. And one interesting case where one of the students, our advisor got the student on the phone and she recognized the student's voice and the student said, I'm sorry, he's not available right now, would you like to leave a message? So we found that some students are less receptive to help than others. And I went out and did some research, see what the research said about that. And I'd like to read to you very quickly two excerpts from a study by Noah Levitz. Noah Levitz is the premier organization in America on student retention. Done a lot of benchmarking and they understand student retention. The first paragraph says, "The first term of college is best described as a transformational experience, which can swing either positively or negatively. Given the tremendous growth and adjustment that occurs during the first term, it's not surprising that students' attitudes and motivations, as well as their receptivity to institutional help, can shift dramatically over the course of just a few months." And another paragraph I'd like to read to you from this Noah Levitz study. "Students' receptivity to assistance and the institution's offerings of programs and services do not ensure, however, that students will respond to the interventions and accrue the potential benefits, and accrue the potential benefits. Likewise, a student's lack of receptivity during the first term does not necessarily translate to disinterest in assistance during the second term." This is very, very important for our staff. A student blows us off in the first four weeks or the second four weeks doesn't mean that we can't continue, we shouldn't continue, to reach out to those students and to touch them and to provide the assistance to them. So very interesting research. Let me share with you what we are doing in the spring semester. We are continuing to reach out to the African-American male population, college-wide, and that is being led by Dr. Kevin Gordon. And on our campuses, we are reaching out to a larger population, almost seven times as many as we did on our campus in the fall of two thousand eleven. New students who are enrolling for the first time in the spring, there's ninety-six of those on our campus. Students on academic probation, those are students who were on warning, having not been able to achieve a grade point average, a community grade point average of two-point-zero. And once they get to that point, if they don't show a means of improving, they go on probation. And then, and once they're on probation for a semester, if they don't get that semester's grade point up to two-point-zero, they are suspended. So those students who are on probation now and those students who are returning from suspension, we're reaching out to them in a very personal way as well. I would like to add just one point regarding that strategic aspect of this initiative, that connecting the in-the-classroom teaching and learning environment with the out-of-classroom support environment. And where we're going with that, we're going with a much more systematic and efficient system, where the direction of the action, where in this case, the direction of the action came from the out-of-classroom support. We sent the faculty a survey and asked them to pinpoint where the students were, send it back to us, and then we created the engagement with the student. In the early alert system that Dr. Phil Nikotera is working on, we'll talk to you in the weeks ahead, I'm sure about that, the direction of the action will be from the classroom, the, from the roster in the classroom. The faculty will identify the students who are needing out-of-classroom support and they will generate an early alert to the out-of-classroom support staff, and then we will have the same type of engagements with our students. So we're moving forward. Very interesting project, very special project, but also a very strategic project. I'll answer any questions you may have.
Questions?
I have a couple of comments.
Mr. Gibbons?
Not questions. Thank you, Dr. Carney, very well done. You know, after we started talking about this, and I have to, I have to say that Kim Burke brought it to my attention a lot of times. He sits there, he counts how many African-American males are graduating, every graduation. Now, we've gotten a lot better, I must admit. We have gotten a lot better. But after having those conversations with him, I, I asked Dr. Sam Wright at USF what they were doing. And, and I asked a person that I respected, because I probably wouldn't have made it through college without this guy, Dr. Keith Carradine at the University of Florida. And they both said the same things. In the first semester, kid, young people, college students have to see success, these, these minority students. And as many times as we can touch them usually means that they're going to be successful. So I think you're on the right track.
Yeah, absolutely.
But if you need those folks as a resource, I think you, you can call on them at any time. But Dr. Carradine was ve, you know, and the, to deal with the college athlete is very tough. So he was saying that, you know, he tries to make sure that some of his academic staff touches, touched these young people, you know, sometimes upwards of thirty times in the first semester to make sure, hey, are you okay today? What's going on? You know, what, what classes are you having a problem with? Let's get you to, to, you know, to tutoring or whatever we can do. But I think our, our dilemma is a little different because a lot of times they're older students, so they're going to need a little more mediation. But I think you're headed in the right direction. Thanks for the report.
We feel very good about the direction we're headed in. We're going to be doing much, much more.
We also say thank you to Dr. Williams and, and Dr. Gordon over there. I know they've been very instrumental in helping with that.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Other questions?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
And Dr. Law, I don't mean to put you on the spot here, but I know we have way later in the agenda under your presence, Report, Achieving the Dream, and this really ties to this topic. Would you mind if we move that up and talk about it right now? Because I think this kind of goes with this effort, if that's fine?
Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
Achieving the Dream is a, a national program that was founded by the Lumina Foundation with the Gates Foundation some six or eight years ago. They identified colleges that were, had high numbers of students on Pell Grants. Long and short, it started with about two dozen colleges. It now includes something upwards of a hundred and fifty colleges. The commitment of the college is to develop a real discipline and rigor, to streamline focus, and to evaluate everything that has to do with students making it to the finish line, to being successful at graduation. So it requires that all of the support programs undergo a very rigorous evaluation. The long and short, though, is its, its genesis was to close the gap between the graduation rates of students of color and Anglo students. That gap across all institutions, ours is probably the same, is something on the order of about ten or fifteen percent is what happens. So as the Achieving the Dream program has grown, you get very highly self-inspect, self-regarding colleges, faculty engage in all of these. Long and short is, we were invited back in the fall to take a look, to see if we would like to come in. I have been part of it, I think very highly of it, I think it's been hugely successful. It helps change an organization. I, I can't keep, people aren't going to change because I give a speech. People are going to change because they talk to other faculty who are engaged in this and they seek peers. So I was very anxious for that to happen. Candidly, the price tag was a little high, especially as we were looking at, we didn't know what the budget would look like, and I didn't want to be cutting budgets on one hand and adding new programs on the other hand. We find ourselves in a little bit of a budget situation and, and to be perfectly honest, the Kresge Foundation, we expect notice any day, will essentially be writing the check for our participation so that we have outside funding to do the kinds of things. They'll, they'll write a check for about a quarter, a hundred and twenty-five thousand over the next three years. We'll have to find about thirty-five thousand dollars a year. For that, we tap into a vast array of programs and services that have to do with helping students get to the finish line for their work. The most important thing, and in fact, the reason we've been invited in, and I should tell you, our good friends at Miami Dade are the other college invited in this time, is the, the work that we're doing to track our students, to use the right metrics, to develop the kinds of data and information used throughout the organization. So they know of us that way, they know that's kind of one of my real interests, and I, and I think that has led us to this juncture. We, we had, Dr. Kevin Gordon, I deputized him to go to the, a recent meeting of Achieving the Dream to, to just get the flavor of it. Mr. Chairman, could I ask Kevin to just say a word or two about what he encountered there?
Good morning.
Good morning.
It was my pleasure to be able to go out to Dallas, Texas, the week before spring break and attend the Achieving the Dream Conference, which we were invited to attend. And as Dr. Law has already alluded to, the, the central focus of this organization is to focus on student achievement and college completion. So as I arrived there and, and got to participate in some of the plenaries and the breakout sessions, what I learned is that we're really right on target in terms of the things sessions, what I learned is that we're really right on target in terms of the things that the other 150, 160 community colleges that are involved in Achieving the Dream and are focused on student success and college completion should be doing. Our infrastructure is really robust in terms of our institutional research, and in some regards, we're really ahead of the game in terms of the metrics we can pull, the data warehouse that we can access in terms of looking at tracking information on students and being able to focus in on the areas that help them be successful. I wanted to just kind of quote some information I got from one of the breakout sessions, and it was a study that was done by Indiana University. And students that are focusing on student success and are successful at it, 92.7 percent have developmental courses, 59 percent contact students who missed classes within the first three weeks, 51.6 percent collect midterm grade data, 83 percent of those collect midterm grade data and contact the students, 68 percent have a retention coordinator on campus, 58.6 require orientation for first-time students and first-year students, and 89 percent have flexible payment option. And I would submit to you that all of those are areas that the college is currently focusing on. So, not only are we, we in, we're in the ballpark, but we're on the right track.
Great. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anything else, Dr. Law, on that?
Sir, thank you.
Mr. Burke?
I have a little bit of knowledge on this, and a little bit of knowledge is often dangerous, but I'm going to go ahead and make a few comments on it. Dr. Law, I know there was a very critical report done on Achieving the Dream as far as an audit of it, and I was able to read through that report. I couldn't put my hands on it last night, I'm not sure what I did with it. But one of the things which I, which hit me was I think some colleges bought into this with saying, okay, there we've checklist that off, we've now, now have our minority success program done, we have Achieving the Dream. And it seemed like there, that it was either buy-in or not buy-in, real buy-in from the college from a bottom-up approach. And I think that's our challenge here, and I don't think it's a great challenge, because I think we have a great staff who will accept it. But getting that buy-in from the bottom up and everyone who's involved with it, it seemed the colleges which really took it and, and applied it to every aspect are the ones who made it successful and the ones who spent a lot of money and just basically said, okay, we're in Achieving the Dream College, experience failure. I know they have a pretty robust group of people go around, and we have counselors or whatever they're called, or they have a fancier name than that, who, who help us implement Achieving the Dream. But I, but I hope, you know, we have our career staff council, our faculty senate, and I think that, that whole buy-in from everyone and getting everyone to understand what the program's all about, it seems to be, from what I read in that report, the key to the success of this program.
Mr. Burke, I think you, I think you have hit it. You know, it also requires support at the highest levels, too, so that part is there. Here's the experience I had. Once you make the commitment to do this, you get very focused on what works and what doesn't work, not how you feel about what works. In a prior lifetime, we were able to identify 26 different support programs for students. Who got into what program? There was no logic to it. What the effectiveness of any program was? There was no evaluation to many of those programs. So, narrowing it down to try new things, but then to discard the ones that aren't working and to expand the ones that are working was one of the real value structures that we can do. The fact is, we can do this on our own, but it is so much easier to do if we have other institutions who have already walked this trail and can give us some guidance as to how they have done these evaluations. What has made, where have they made those changes? Where should we be looking? And I think our, I'm not committed, worried about our commitment at this board level, certainly I'm not committed, worried about our commitment at the top, and I'm not really worried at the bottom. I think we just have to get a much higher organizational discipline to get the biggest benefit from these kinds of things, and I think being part of this group gives us the chance to do that.
One last comment, and I hope, and I'm sure they bring in a lot of their own, but at the same time, because of what we've developed with our business intelligence, I, you know, we don't need to reinvent that part or use their prescribed method. We may, we have our own database here, which is very live, and I think that's, that's going to help us make this Achieving the Dream very successful at our college because of that.
Mr. Burke, they're lining up to get access to what we're doing.
I'm sure they are.
Okay, that's part, that's a two-way street.
Thank you.
I guess my question may be for Dr. Gordon, Dr. Law. Was there any discussion around student-centered organizations than we talk about those other organizations that are on campus that, that Dr. White talked about earlier, expanding those programs? Does that help or does that hurt this process? Did they talk about that at all at this conference?
Well, as you can imagine, there were hundreds of sessions.
Sure, sure.
And there were three of us, so we kind of tried to divide and conquer where we went. I think the closest that I got to something that was a student organization, there was a session that focused primarily on helping African-American males and males of color be successful. And there is a college in Arizona, Tulsa Community College, and they have a specific program that's focused on African-American males. But I did not attend anything specifically that focused on student organizations. The whole premise of Achieving the Dream is student-centered. And Mr. Burke, I just wanted to, because I kind of sent some updates as I was out there, so I just want to kind of send you a last line to kind of reiterate what you were saying. And it says, "We have a very good start towards ideals and principles of Achieving the Dream. Many of the schools that are experiencing success have procedures for tracking attendance and grades and have processes in place to follow up with students. In addition, the faculty are a critical piece of the success of Achieving the Dream," and I think that's what you're alluding to. So, I think, I think the college experience, it's a very good vehicle that will, will really drive that, and it all aligns and will be seamless. And I think as we continue to, to scale it up and roll it out, that the faculty will be a very critical piece of that.
Mr. Burke?
Dr. Law, is there any action we could take today to support this cause?
Mr. Burke, I think I created just a very brief, two-sentence motion that would be, I think, a very strong signal for the board to lend its support to this. General in nature, but I think, given where we've been as an organization, this is very important.
I haven't seen it, but I want to make the motion that would support our-
I'm not in a position to make any motion.
Achieving the Green, Achieving the Dream initiative, because I think this is another step in the right direction for St. Petersburg's college commitment to reflect the values of this community.
Make the motion.
Would you like to read it?
Read it.
"That the board trustees of St. Petersburg College express its full support for the inclusion of the college in the Achieving the Dream program, and that it uses this opportunity to further sharpen its effort to support, in supporting of raising graduation rates for all students at the college. The president shall make periodic reports to the board on the nature and effectiveness of the programs developed towards this goal."
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you.
One of the, one of the issues that came out of the legislative session had to do with the, a completion project, pilot project for completion. I've asked Jim Oliver, it's an online program. We bounced this from last month's agenda, because it wasn't quite ready, and it did in fact pass the legislature. It's one of the items on my report, Mr. Oliver, Dr. Oliver.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. If Dr. Nicotera's goal was to have simplicity, my goal is to be complex. This, this very complicated graphic really illustrates a seismic shift in state policy regarding the consolidation and integration of distance learning in the state of Florida. If you look at the top, there are four separate organizations that were, that were in legislation previously, under, under separate organizational structures. Fax.org, which is an economic counseling organization at the state level, the CCLA and FCLA, the library associations for the state colleges and for the universities, and then the Florida Distance Learning Consortium, which includes everything from the Distance Learning Catalog to the Orange Grove, which is the online textbooks and, and online materials. The, the intent is to, and the legislation actually took all of the appropriations for these bodies and put them under a new entity called the Florida Virtual Campus, which you see below. And so, the idea is that they would develop efficiencies and more effectiveness, and in fact, extend services through the consolidation of these and, under the Florida Virtual Campus. In the lower left-hand corner of the screen, you'll see a little, a little box that says Degree Completion Project. This is, this was actually under discussion for a long period of time, primarily with the universities, solely with universities involved. And through the good graces of our president and our reputation in distance learning, that program was changed to have four institutions in the pilot project, and you see their logos there. S.A.P. College, University of South Florida, Florida State College at Jacksonville, and the lead institution in this initiative, the University of West Florida. And the legislation calls for, and this is a quote from the legislation, "It's established," the pilot is, "established for the purpose of recruiting, recovering, and retaining the state's adult learners and assisting them in completing an associate or baccalaureate degree that is aligned with high-wage, high-skill workforce needs." It's to get adults back to work. And they defined adults as individuals who've come to college, been successful, but stopped out, and now have a certain number of credits and are ready to go back. The, the pilot has several components. We had our first meeting just last week. And the first is innovative curriculum, and you'll start seeing some themes as we go through this. In order to be a program, a degree program in the pilot, the program has to be fully online, fully online programs. And the notion there is that some distance learning is quote-unquote 80 percent, that students have to come to campus for part of the time. It has to be fully online, so that a student from anywhere in the state can come to a program at St. Petersburg College. Has to have accelerated planning or scheduling. That means that the, the program has to be offered, the courses have to be offered, in five weeks, eight weeks, 10 weeks. The notion is to move through the program quicker. And then the next two are very important components. That's prior learning assessment and competency-based instruction. That's the ability to get credit for what the student already knows. That could be done through accepting certificates, in the computer area especially, for portfolios or through exams. And the last item relates to a provision in the legislation that talks for other universities to be able to participate. Because as part of the original plan, there were, all the universities were going to participate. Now, it's the two pilots, but other universities, for example, the University of Florida, can offer tracks or can offer concentrations, so that a student may get a degree from the University of West Florida, but take a series of courses at, in a specialized area from the University of Florida. In addition to the innovative curriculum, the idea is that there'll be innovative support services for students. And it's ironic that we talked in the previous presentations about, in Achieving the Dream, about touches, about touches for students, because the idea is that there will be degree completion specialists on the campuses who will do intentional advising, intentional advising defined as being in constant contact with the students, so that they are, that they're tracked and monitored throughout their progress, so that they can be successful. Provide seamless transition to students between institutions. Again, the notion that the individual may take courses from several institutions, and there's been some work at the state level on a, on a transient student forum, so that students can move among institutions to accumulate credit. The notion that it'll utilize the, creatively utilize the services we already have in place that you saw at the top of the bar of the complicated slide, and that there is a central point for initial contact and statewide marketing, that, that there is a central website, an opportunity for statewide phone calls, for chats, to get the student who may have a general interest to the institution that's offering the program. When we testified before the Florida Legislature, we talked about the fact that the Florida pilot would do some important things. We talked about the fact that it would build on the prior commitments and investments of the Florida Legislature. Some of you may know that there was $2.5 million in the legislation for this program, for the pilot, which is a two-year pilot. Initially, there was also $2.5 million for Western Governors University. Western Governors came to Florida, said that we can do a program for your adult learners, we can, we can build on, we can, we can work with competency issues, we can work quickly, we can be more efficient. And we talked to the state, talked to the legislature, about the fact that, that they had already made an investment through the infrastructure and the colleges that were working on distance learning, and that we ought to be given an opportunity to take on this challenge and be successful at it. We do offer award-winning expertise in operations and curriculum development. We did cite, as part of that legislation, many of the awards that St. Pete College received or has received for distance learning. Using the existing infrastructure, we reported that Florida colleges and universities offer over 642 fully online degree programs right now, and over 28,000 fully online courses, again statewide, and that we were in a position to offer those online accelerated programs for students who have stopped out. Another emphasis in the bill is for veterans and for active-duty military. And the count was that there's over 2 million individuals who have stopped out, veterans and active military in the state of Florida. And we talked about mirroring the advantages of a central branding with that single point of contact with the resources that already exist on campus. A detailed project plan defining major work activities, student eligibility criteria, the timeline and the cost of the project is due by June the first of this year. The pilot starts this fall. We're expected to have students enrolled in courses this fall, and it transitions from the four-year, from the four pilot institutions to the Florida Virtual Campus no later than June 30 of next year. So, rapid project acceleration. Make no mistake about it, when we were testifying, the legislators, legislative representatives were very interested in degree completion that was provided faster. That's why you see the notion of competency and accelerated curriculum, and less expensively. They were, they were convinced that there was an ability to offer distance learning less expensively than we offer traditional education. I mentioned Western Governors. One of the things Western Governors brought to the table is purportedly the ability to do just that. So, this is our opportunity to do business differently, and there was a section of the legislation that, that is particularly interesting. It talks about costs, and it's, it states that in the pilot, we will be using current tuition and fees at the member institutions, the four pilot institutions. But it also says that the chancellors of the state college system and the university system shall submit a report to the chairs of Legislative Appropriations Committee no later than December 31, 2013, on the need for a differentiated tuition and fee structure for the development and delivery of distance learning courses. So, faster and less expensive, change is coming. This is a great opportunity for the college and those in the pilot, and kudos to Dr. Law for getting us involved, and I think it's a great opportunity for us. Questions?
Mr. Burke?
I had the good fortune, I happened to be in Tallahassee for another matter, and I went to the, the Senate testimony, that presentation that Dr. Oliver and the representative of the University of West Florida gave. And, and Dr. Oliver gave a great presentation that day and a likewise great presentation here today. I'm going to focus more on the reaction of the senators, because it's, I think it's interesting. We look at this one way, and I think the senators look at it a different way. And you, you ended your presentation with the way they're thinking about this. And I think it's a double-edged sword here, and, and I should be careful what I say, but I could tell you this, the knowledge that they have in online education is at a very rudimentary level. And they have all the stereotypes. We heard every stereotype of, of online education from the questions we got, and this was from the Higher Education Committee. This is not, this is supposed to be a committee. So, we as an association, I can tell you this, Dr. Law, have done a horrible job at educating our legislators on what online education really means. I think they have this idea that you flip on a computer, you teach all these people, and there's nothing involved with it, and it's a canned presentation that you had from, from, you know, four years ago. I mean, Dr. Oliver, some of those questions were coming from that vantage point, and they were saying, oh, and because you have no bricks and mortar, we can do this really inexpensive. I mean, it was, it was very troubling to hear. It wasn't about quality education and quality courses, it was about cheap and why this is less expensive. And it's, and the idea, too, the other part that was a part of the questioning I remember was, well, this is really- was, well, this is really good, because if this college offers this program, they could offer it statewide, online, and we don't have to fund that program at any other college. And that was concerning too, because online is just one aspect of learning. So I mean, it's a great pilot, but I think it's also opened up a lot of exposure of education that we have, and I think it's education. I think, you know, the same thing, if we were off the street, those of us who are trustees, and you asked us about online education, we would have thought it's a lot cheaper. We would have thought, my gosh, they don't need, this is, until you learn how we do it with all the contacts we have with students, and how you have online office hours, and how the intensity is there. As a matter of fact, it's more intense because we want to make sure that the students are successful. They have no idea. I could tell you, there was not a senator who talked anywhere about the commitment of a faculty member in online education and what it takes for a successful online education course. I think they saw this as almost like the old TV model of courses. I think that's what they had in their mind as, and so I'm for this program, obviously, but I'm very concerned about how that was, if they, if they ask that brick-and-mortar question about why don't we have, and it's obviously, that's the end result, because the cheap tuition thing is one of the mandates of this thing. And I think we're heading down the wrong path if that's the, if that's how they're going to measure success of this program. The success of this program is availability, access to people throughout the state. The military, obviously, the Florida, the Jacksonville schools, one of the main reasons that was brought in is because of their military commitment. But we have a lot of education of members, and I probably should focus on those higher education members and make appointments during, as soon as the election's over in November, with each one of them and go visit them to talk about what a quality distance learning program is all about, because they don't know. And that's not the forum to do it, where we did it in front of the committee. That's my comments, Dr. Law.
Mr. Burke, I appreciate that. My enthusiasm for this project is, we're at the core of the discussion. If I know exactly how it was going to play, I'm not comfortable sitting on the sidelines letting other people wrestle with these critical issues. I'd just soon be at the table, using our best offices, to wrestle with these critical issues. But cheaper, better, faster is the mantra. Now, cheaper, better, faster. I'm not willing to say any one is the most important thing. So, you know, we're there because of our background experience and our willingness to roll up our sleeves and get involved in this. I couldn't be happier to be there. I would be beside myself if I was watching the deliberations and just listening to people pontificate about what we should be doing instead of what we're already doing. So Jim is, as you saw, one of the experts in our state, and I'm happy to have him at that table.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, we are moving on to Agenda Item 7B, Bookstore Services. Dr. Law?
Did you want to take that as a consent item, Mr.?
Doug Duncan has a presentation for us. This is a big, big, important board responsibility. Periodically, just like we did with the banking bid and others, we bid services that are critical to the functioning of this institution. We're now a hugely, a big organization with lots of different parts. Doug Duncan and my senior team led a six-month-long review of existing bookstore and where we're headed, and we have a recommendation to you today. I'd like to give them a couple of minutes for background, because it is important for everyone to hear the quality of work that went into this recommendation.
Thank you. Good morning. I asked Dr. Williams and Dr. Cooper to come up, because as you can see from the fairly large committee that we had working on this, that it was well-represented on, from the academic and student services side, and a lot of work went into it. Faculty, we had a student representative, Sarah Pemberton, who I assure you was very actively involved in the presentations and so on. Since December, when we put the RFP out, we've been very actively involved in this process. And when we started out, as you can see from that committee, we had very diverse group, all of whom had different levels of knowledge about textbook operations, textbook affordability, all those issues. So the first few phases of the process, we spent with our consultant reviewing the RFPs, tying the RFP document to the consultants. The consultant did an analysis of the RFPs when they were returned. And we had several meetings where we reviewed the RFP against his report and basically tied the criteria of evaluation to each individual area. And it's, if you ever, if you looked in your book, you'll see at the top of each section that it relates directly to the evaluation criteria that each member scored as we went through it. After that, we wanted to kind of form a common base of knowledge among the group of what we were looking for and so on. Following that process, there was a preliminary assessment. We then had vendor presentations at the beginning of February. That was an all-day activity. We, it was, we had some members view it from online, we had others directly in the room. All the vendors came in, brought large groups, did a great job. We actually have all those on tape as well. Following those presentations, we then sat down again with the group to revisit the criteria, what we heard, how it sort of embellished what was stated in the RFPs. The consultant took the group through it. We then had some follow-up questions. The group actually came up with some clarification questions that we wanted to ask before we went into that final, that final phase. Following the, getting the answers to those questions, we had a final meeting, and then every member then had their, their final assessment due on Monday, February 20. And that assessment then was, was put together, was tabulated by the purchasing, Paul Smeneley and his group. And actually, we were, I don't, surprise isn't the word, but actually, there was quite a large scoring gap between the number-one vendor and the other two. And that then formed the basis of the recommendation that you have in front of you now. Following that, we did follow up a little bit with Barnes &amp; Noble, who was at the top of the list, and did a little, some preliminary clarifying of some of their items to make sure we understood and tie them down. From that point, we are here asking that we get your approval to enter into final, say, negotiations to finalize that contract, and then begin a transition plan should all that go well. We know this is a huge move, that I'm told both by our consultant, and I've had discussions with Follett, who is aware of this, and Barnes &amp; Noble, and they assure us it will be a relatively seamless, I'm sure a few bumps along the way, but a relatively seamless process. And they do this all the time. They change out bookstores. So they're, they've got a process down that they go through. With that said, I'll open it up to any questions or comments.
Dr. Williams, Dr. Cooper, do you want to add anything to that?
I'd just like to reiterate that it was an extremely thorough process. We went through line by line. There was involvement college-wide in regards to representatives from each of the campuses and the various entities within the college. And so I think we have provided the opportunity for all of the vendors to present their best and then make decisions and assessments accordingly.
I'd also like to add, if you recall, about a year and a half ago, we had the campus meetings with the students on the bookstores and what they were looking for. We kept those recommendations from the students in mind as we went forward in making this decision. And the candidate that rose to the top was able to meet the student needs, so that we can help them get their books in a timely fashion, but also less expensively.
Refresh my memory, who was the consultant?
Tom Byrne.
And had, had we used that consultant in the past?
Not to my knowledge. That was the first time that I've worked with him. Did a great job. I actually had hoped he could be here today, but he is on business.
Going back a number of years before I was here, I know Follett's been on the scene for quite a while. Had we gone through a similar process like this at some point years ago?
I believe the last time, I think Conferley probably did the last RFP when he was in my role.
Mr. Burke, may I remember? We did do a thorough investigation with Follett's. I can't remember exactly, it must have been four years ago. There were a number of issues that we were faced with regarding their system, regarding books not being on the shelves when we were needing them, a lot of complaints from faculty. And we developed a sort of agreement with them in writing at a very high level within Follett's, and they did close a lot of those gaps. But we've had some issues in the past. Mr. Burke, may I remember, board meeting we had down at HEC where there was a vote to renew Follett's, and that was the first split vote that I've seen from this board. So that, I think, is indicative of the, some of the issues we've had in the past and how we've tried to work with them.
Sure. Mr. Burke?
I move approval of Item B1.
So moved. Second, I'm sorry.
The only comment I would like to make is I want to thank you. The most important part of this to me is the process that we had, and that was a good process. And obviously, through the documentation that you put in our board packet that you're presenting here today, it was a very good and well-thought-out process, so I thank you for that. And as I expressed to Dr. Law in my board questioning the transition plan, I can imagine that it's, so I hope we seek advice too, not only from Barnes &amp; Noble and how they've done it, but also maybe contact some colleges which have gone through this to get helpful hints on, on things that, problems they ran into.
I prepared just a few highlights of what we think we accomplished. I think there's a lot more detail in your packet. Let me run through those quickly and...
Please.
Based on our, we project about a sixteen and a half million dollar sales from our bookstores. That amounts, under this particular agreement with Barnes &amp; Noble, to about a $2 million annual lease commission structures. You know, we don't charge rent, but we do get commissions back that helps with our operating costs and so on. One thing that was very key is that we got an agreement that they would commit, should the board determine to continue that program, that for the first year, they would agree to commit $500,000 to the textbook credit program, and that's above and beyond any, anything else that they would be doing. After that, they agreed to no less than 45% for each year after that. That's been a very successful program. It's basically gift cards that we give to students that apply directly to their costs, and it gives some of that money back. They're going to invest about a half a million dollars in technology and capital investment facilities. That's primarily technology to make sure that what we are able to do in processing book orders and do online transactions maintains its same level. The capital investment, of course, most of that just goes into them moving, remodeling the stores to fit their, their brand.
But their brand, from what I read in that, in your, has a lot more student-friendly aspects to it than what our current vendor has, and that was good to see too.
Yes. We, one of the things that was very key, and a lot of discussion over the last couple of years, was the whole issue of the evolvement of the digital books. And we didn't want to get caught again where, should a year from now, we see some big changes in that industry, and then what we're offering to students is not competitive. So we have sort of a re-opener in that contract where annually, we will review, and they will have basically first right of refusal to either modify their pricing structure or platform to meet those needs, or we may opt then to seek other avenues on the digital side. Few key things on the pricing. New textbooks, bundles, and course packs will not exceed 25% gross margin, basically the markup. We got a lot of controversy over freight add-ons and surcharges. Those will not be in the contract going forward. We were also able to get some agreement on free shipping for online purchases. Our business for online orders now has gone up significantly, and they will not have that $5.95 shipping charge. Also, the maximum rental textbook would be 50% of new textbook cost, maybe less, but will not exceed 15, 50%. One of the things that the group was very concerned about, because our rental program has been very successful, very popular, and so our discussions with Barnes &amp; Noble have been to make sure, and they guaranteed that we would not, their availability would not be less than what we're currently able to offer. And in fact, they've assured us it will continue to grow. They've also, one thing sort of unique about Barnes &amp; Noble is that they actually have student internships in their stores, and they bragged quite heavily, and rightly so, that many of their store managers come directly from those internships. And that they, they also offer, there's an additional 20,000 in student scholarships. They also will be donating 100 NOOK tablets for the student learning support centers and contributing to other ongoing support activities at the campuses. We also wanted to make sure that the book line of credit that we just got online over the last year will continue, and part of that comes via their technology investment. So that's kind of a high-level view of some of the key points, but there are others.
Excellent. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we will move now on to Agenda Item 7B2, the lease for Nature's Table in downtown campus. A motion to approve that, please?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Any comments, Dr. Law?
No, no, sir, that, we've been here several times.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you. On to Agenda Item 7E1. Dr. Law?
In the next step from the actions taken by this board last month to authorize us to move forward with the replacement of the Michael Bennett, the library on Clearwater Campus require us to do a number of things with the state of Florida, largely get the state to determine that that building is not worth fixing, and there's a process for that. That is the unfortunate title of that, is resolution to terminate. We will, you get an engineering study to come in and determine that the fix-up cost of the building exceeds some threshold, some high threshold amount, 60%, maybe 70%, at which point the state then will allow you to put a new item on your capital improvement list going forward. So we will start that process for that. Same thing then, you must then do a needs assessment for the new facilities, so we would begin that process. Let me take just a second on the Clearwater Library project. Your vote last month was very helpful, because we have a great deal of work in front of us to get a game plan for that library, to make sure we know exactly what is happening with out-of-class learning support. I think the question of what a library, a college library, looks like in this day and age is, it's either a great deal of fun or a great deal of stress, depending upon where you sit on those issues. And then in this particular case, we did follow up immediately and met with a good friend of the college, George Kretikos, who is the new mayor of the city of Clearwater. Discussions over a long period of time have taken place about the desirability of working together on a community college joint-use library, and Mayor Kretikos was very happy for us to reinvigorate that discussion. I suspect we are a year away from bringing you a plan for a library. It's just that much work for us to be, to be doing. But along the way, we'll do the paperwork. So you have here then the three items, 1, 2... So you have here then the three items, one, two and three, all relate to the necessary preliminary work to move forward with a, a replacement plan for that library. Mr. Chairman, I'll leave, let's take those three first, is that okay?
Yeah, motion to approve?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. E4?
This board, over a long period of time, including action last, last August, has always had on its five-year capital plan the nature of, of a facility that would optimize our wonderful piece of land at, at the Bay Pines, at the Marina, the lagoon at, at Bay Pines. We have had that there. We think it's an important opportunity for us to continue to develop the marine science infrastructure for the college. We would do it, my vision is that we would do it in partnership with our high school friends. It's too valuable, a piece of land for us to, to turn around. We then have a window on the Gulf, we have a window that becomes a natural lab for the development of marine science opportu, uh, learning opportunities. We were successful in having the legislature authorize two and a half million dollars to get that process started this year, subject of course to any, any action taken by the governor. But this item that we would do today is to make sure that, once again, we have then taken the very next step in the paperwork process. Although you have added it to your list, we have to then get what's called a site survey, and we would just get that paperwork done. So your authorization is required for us to move forward with that. And we have started those dialogues with both the community and with the school district.
Mr. Chairman, move approval of item E4 and 5, please.
Sorry.
Discussion? All in favor? Aye opposed? Thank you. On to item G. Motion to approve 1A, please.
So move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? And then item G1B. Please.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have to do something. It has been about sixteen years since this college looked at our classification structure, about fifteen years since we looked at our compensation structure. It's about time we take another look at both of those things. So what we did is we hired Fox Lawson and Associates to help us with that, and we hired them in 2011. We hired them to do several things, to review our classification and compensation of career service and AMP positions. You recall though, we already looked at faculty last year through a separate process. We asked them to recommend an updated classification structure, to draft new job descriptions, and to recommend an updated salary structure. Where we are right now is about in the middle of that slide. We now have a draft classification structure, and I want to emphasize throughout this that it is all still in draft, is still living and breathing and changing. What this does for us, it gives us a framework for positions across the college. It gives us something so simple as common nomenclature. So if you have in one area a position whose job includes the title of assistant, the title of technician, and the title of specialist, they're pretty much going to have the same scope of duties with that title in another area in the college. So we now, we will have similar positions similarly aligned. The career pathing is something that's very important to us, to provide for our employees, to give people a much clearer vision of where they have opportunity for growth at the college. It's very important to reiterate that right now, the only priority is the career service portion of that. That is the, that is the sole priority and focus of this study at this time. And although we've reiterated this throughout the process, I want to state again that, that no one will lose pay as a result of this. No one will lose their job as a result of this. I want to go into a little more detail about what they've already done. They draft the classification structure, we have it in place. They have recommended going from one hundred and thirty-six down to sixty-five career service titles, which we think is a little more tenable. This resulted from a lot of feedback, as you can see on this slide. Surveys, meetings, Fox Lawson flew down here more than once, focus groups, conference calls. Nearly seven hundred, and we have about seven hundred plus, this is really good response. Nearly seven hundred employees completed what we call position description questionnaires back in the fall. Nearly three hundred career service employees completed a survey of the first draft of the classification structure that was completed at the end of the calendar year. What is next is probably what a lot of people are waiting to see, and that is the look at compensation. Fox Lawson will be doing a couple of different things. They'll be looking at external market competitiveness, and they'll be reviewing internal equity. We're hoping that by the end of April, we should know where we are now in relation to where we should be in compensation. We estimate, they estimate that they will have for us a recommended salary structure for our consideration and for the deliberation by the end of May. And at the same time, of course, they are also working on updated position descriptions. As I indicated before, this is not done. Even when they come back to us with what they say is final, and we take it and do what we decide to do with it in implementation, there is still an opportunity for appeal. What is presented to you right now is the common process that Fox Lawson uses for such appeals. We can tweak it, we can work with the Career Service Employee Council to update this as appropriate. They estimate that this would take about six weeks for employees to give their feedback, go through the process, Fox Lawson deliberate, and get back to us on their recommendations. Questions?
Mr. Chairman, we are very close to the end, we've been at it for a long time. Many of us have experience in this. We're, we're at the point of maximum vibration right now though, because we're getting to the serious part in the next few weeks. I will tell you, my commitment to everyone is that before I make a recommendation to you on this, I will be willing to look everybody in the eye and say that their job is fairly weighted and slotted appropriately across our institution, and that the college is competitive for salaries and benefits in the market in which we hire. So I have, those are the two standards to which I'm holding myself, lots of details. And, and I think we ought to be generous. We have, you saw the longevity of our career staff, they've been here for a long time. They have given their life to the college. At the same time, they, you know, I, when it's tough, I often say, God love them. Nobody does their job as well as they do, and they, they tend to act on that. They, they take a great deal of pride in what they do. And I, I think the hardest discussions we're going to have is that in, in some cases, people have outgrown their job and they've not had the opportunity to move on to another job. And that's why the career pathing is an important piece for us. And if we can solve that piece, a lot of the, the steam will come out of, of the concerns. Not everybody will be happy when you start this, everybody thinks they're going to get a raise out of it. The, the reality is, very few do. We're, we're competitive in the market, is my sense. If we weren't, people wouldn't stay with us. We turn over enough people to be sure that we can hire at the right level. So I think there's a, a natural leavening that takes place in a, in the career market. So I'm not particularly concerned that we're going to find ourselves off by major commitments to readjust salaries. We'll find some classifications that are wrong, we'll find some individual cases that are wrong, and we'll fix those, and then we're done. We're going to live with this for a good long time. So we're very close, you should expect to hear those concerns rattling around the institution. We're taking them all serious, everyone deserves a, a good answer as to why we're doing what we're doing.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Dr. Duncan?
Good morning again. You, you may have noticed back in November, November, December timeframe that when I first start, came to you and, and started noticing this, this little gap that was widening in the, on the revenue and expense side, that, that I got a little nervous. Since then, you can see though, the last couple of months, that it has stabilized. It's, the, the expense and revenue lines are running pretty parallel at this point, and, and I'm, I'm certainly a lot less nervous, I think things are looking pretty good. Even though February was not a heavy volume month from a revenue perspective, we still, year to date, year over year, our tuition revenue is up one point six million. You, you probably saw in your detail sheet that probably what jumps out a little bit on the revenue side, aside from just tuition, is that the, the lab fees are down about four hundred thousand dollars. That was an intentional effort where prior to technology fees coming out, we did have some lab fees that had technology type items included, and we've taken those out. As well as, I know Anne and her staff have, have revisited many of these, and we've even either reduced rates and in fact eliminated some of these lab fees. So that's an expected move. Right now, our, our year-to-date surplus is still healthy at about seven point nine million. Month over month, again, February's a fairly low-volume month. You can see in student tuition, we only expected about a hundred and ninety thousand and received a hundred and fourteen thousand. But our total revenues are pretty consistent from last month and are where we expected them to be. We're still about three percent off. The one thing on month, from one month to the next, on the expense side and the personnel benefits, you know, we, we started our new health plan, and so our, our contribution rates went up a little bit starting in January. We also ceded a large number of the, the healths, the spending accounts, the health savings accounts. We ceded those with upfront money, and so we saw a jump in expense. You'll see about a four hundred and fifty thousand over what we expected. But again, most of that was due to the higher-than-expected enrollment in, in the HSA plan. Total expenses have, again, have leveled out at about one percent both month over month and, and year-to-date. So we're comfortable that, that things are looking better at this point. You want to stop there for a minute, and then before we?
Questions at this point? Please continue.
Okay. Want to give you a, a budget update. A lot, a lot of things have happened since the last, last meeting and that have allowed us to tweak the numbers a little bit and, and come up with certainly a much more positive view of what we anticipate for July 1. Right now, our, our preliminary or tentative budget is, projects no enrollment, no enrollment increase for lower division and three percent for upper division. So fairly conservative projection there. It does anticipate healthcare cost increases, I'll show you that in just a minute. As we just talked about with the career, the classification study, we do have some funding there to, for whatever comes out of that in terms of alignment and any market adjustments that are, are necessary. We've also incorporated, at this point, the second year of the faculty compensation adjustments, as well as we, we carry forward the, the new and replacement faculty positions that we included in last year's budget. Right now, the recommendation that came out of the legislature that we've incorporated is to increase tuition and fees by five percent. And what's very important to us is it, it does allow us to continue the final piece of our technology refresh plan, which right now is at about ninety-five to ninety-eight percent of our, of our technology. Just to show you the detail of what I just described, that five percent on the revenue side, on this projection, would net us about an additional one point eight million going into next year. Now, the, the interesting thing that came out of the legislature, if you look down at the next line, is that in our general program fund, they recommend a two point one million dollar reduction, but offset that with a two point eight million in lottery. Now, I understand what allowed them to do that, I don't have all the detail, but there were some other programs around the state that were funded by lottery money that they took out, which allowed them then to reallocate that money for this purpose, for the two point eight million. Again, we've reflected the decline in projected lab fee revenues for next year, continued the, the stabilization reserve. On the expense side, start at the top on, under personnel, the one point five million year over year, this is last year's budget, this is the projected budget. About one point five million additional in faculty costs, those are those positions and the, the funding for the second year of the adjustments. We've, we've allocated about four hundred thousand on the compensation study. I, I don't anticipate that it will hit that number, but we wanted to make sure we had funding there if it did. I told you that we anticipated increases in health costs. We've allocated an additional one point two million. A portion of that is also the, the funding for the new positions. So it's partially claims experience and, and partially new positions. Right now, the committees, our strategic committees are meeting, going through the budget requests, and we've identified, if, down here, a line called, we're just calling it operations and strategic allocation, which is to be determined. We have about one point five million available for allocation for either operational or strategic needs. We, we will bring that back to you with the detail once those decisions are made. We have about four hundred and thirty-six thousand to, that can be allocated for operation of new facilities. And we have two contingencies, one distance fee and one technology fee contingency, which that is recurring revenue, that, that's that portion that will allow us to continue to put money into the final phase of our, our technology refresh program. We then end up with a general contingency of about one point one million. About half of that is a, a special project that, that the legislature allocated to us. But we also, at the very bottom, my arrow here, have an, about one point five million on the capital line that we can allocate for, for capital. We can actually allocate it anywhere. It has been allocated for equipment and, and capital purchases. So you may recall, I, we, we were looking at a, a much worse situation had we not gotten that funding from the state. So it's, it's certainly looking much better at this point, and I'll obtain any questions. Just a couple of final notes on the PICO, some of these have already been mentioned. We got the four hundred and thirty-seven on the operating costs of new facilities. We received about three hundred thousand for what's called SOTO, or some of the digits allocation. That is just a number that is tied to the age of our facilities, it's a formula at the state, and it can be used for general repairs and maintenance and, and so on. Interestingly, we received nothing for general remodeling and renovation. We had about a million and a half this year for that purpose. Dr. Law did mention the two point five million for the Bay Pines Marine Science Labs. Now what, another interesting thing that, that came out, that I found out about at the very end, they, the, the legislature made a recommendation to up the cap of what we can charge for the capital improvement fee, basically from, to, it doubled basically. And that would allow us to go up about a dollar sixty on that fee. It is, it's discretionary, it, it's not mandated. But if we were to take, if we were to use the full amount that was recommended by the legislature, it would generate about another one point three million in capital improvement fees that, that could be used then to offset that zero for renovation or remodeling money. So. With that said, that pretty much sums it up.
Mr. Burke?
At last meeting, one of the presentations concerned bonding and financing, and one of the options was this lease type of deal. And the question that y'all were going to research, whether if we go with that option, whether we would still be entitled to the operating expense of the building from the state. Did we get an answer on that?
Yes, we did, and, and. If you want to come up, basically what, what, I'll sum it up, is that it, it does not, the fee doesn't have to wait till the building is opened and fully operational. That, at the point at which we flip the switch, is that the right term, Susan?
At the point where you would put the building into the operational mode, that is when you can start collecting operating costs for new facilities. If we are building buildings that are on our survey, they are college-owned buildings, even when we lease purchase them, when we own them, we will be eligible for operating. even when we lease purchase them, when we own them, we will be eligible for operating costs for new facilities.
So that's not a concern that the Midtown, with that other alternative financing, we would still get the operating expense from the state?
Yes.
The other question, Doug, is, have any of your colleagues or, have you calculated what the, if that order stands out of the Leon County case on the FRS, what the financial ramifications would be to the college? Are we all just hoping that it'll be overturned? Not, shouldn't say that, hoping, all expecting it to be overturned by the Supreme Court?
Yeah. I did hear the other day, that I guess you may have read about it too, that it's been, I guess it didn't go, it went to the federal appeal, and now it's going straight to the Supreme Court.
State Supreme Court.
Yeah, state Supreme Court.
Not federal appeal, local appeal.
Right. Right now, we don't know much. If that were to happen, you recall that we provided 3% last year. It was a pay increase, but in effect, it went so each employee could fund that contribution. And the state took the $3 million from our general revenue that we were contributing on our end. We don't know whether we will get that money back.
Has there been much talk among your colleagues, though, about this topic?
Very little. Mainly, the talk was about, well, the court ordered us to do it immediately, and that, we were told not to do anything right now till we get the, till we get the final. It'll be interesting.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Onto Agenda Item I, Legislative Matters. Dr. Law?
We covered the budget matters. There's a small handful, and I won't bore you. Yesterday, got a 40-page result of everything. I'll send it to you electronically, and I distilled the four or five key things. Tuition, of course, is subject to gubernatorial approval or veto, I guess, whichever side you're on on that, so we'll hold our breath on that, and you have our recommendation.
Was it 5%?
5%, yes, sir. The, a couple of, I think, important, but they shouldn't impact us. The legislature has now authorized that the State Board of Education, through the Commissioner, can, if I use the term, I don't mean it pejoratively, intrude itself into board business if it believes that issues of finance, academic integrity, or organizational control are not being addressed by the local board, the Commissioner can step in and do his own study. I think that's a result of some events at some other colleges over the past year, that when the going got its roughest, the legislature said, "Mr. Commissioner, go out there and see what's going on," and he did not have the authority to go in without the invitation of a board. That authority will now accrue to him.
Which Commissioner would this be, the Education Commissioner?
Commissioner of Education through the State Board of Education, okay? And he can deputize the chancellor to do that, by the way, but it resides with him. You saw the proposal on the Florida Virtual Campus, the pilot project for that, the degree completion plan. This board has its own authority, but we have, in fact, signaled in the past that for future baccalaureate degree approvals, they must now go to the State Board of Education. There had been some recent history that allowed colleges to make their own determination on baccalaureate degrees. That became a cause celebre. The law is now clear, though, that everybody must go back through. I want to be very precise here. We still have our own law, but we, as a board, it predates, a predecessor board has indicated we will follow whatever the law is for everyone else. We will not execute our own organizing statute that we got 10 or 12 years ago. So if we want to expand, we will have to make an appeal to, bachelor's degrees, we'll have to go to the Board of Trustees. There is, you'll love it, that the board must now include system, my contribution to the overall system goals as part of presidential evaluation, so I have to be a good team player, as well as a good president for all of you. There is one very important piece. I want to skip through all these. The legislature has indicated that we must, all colleges must limit the amount of required general education core from 36 to 30 hours, and they must, we must address the issue of language facility within that. There is no tougher issue for a college and its faculty as to decide what goes into the core programs and what's outside, because it impacts directly how many faculty you need. If you have a required course, you need lots of faculty. If you don't have a required course, you need something less than that. We have, the state has to make some determinations before we get to work. They'll give us some guidance as to the general distribution and all of those. We have next year to work on it. It kicks in in 2014, 2015. This is, this is a very difficult issue for faculty and those of us who lead this. Mr. Burke, I'll...
Was this Representative Proctor's question?
Yes, sir.
Now, from what I understand, could you explain more to us about not only how it will impact faculty, how it will impact our students, especially with the foreign language requirement?
Do you care if I get a little help because of the level of precision? And if you could give me just a little guidance as to how that's going to execute itself? I'm not sure I know that.
Previously, for the two-year degree, the language requirement did not have to be met. Students, obviously, who were planning to go on and transfer to complete a four-year degree, or our students who were coming to us for their four-year degree, had to complete the language requirement if they had not done the two courses during their high school experience. Now, what the new legislation is asking is that that language requirement be met while they are with us for the two-year degree.
So even if they have the high school, they would...
No, if they have the high school requirement, then they've met it. It's not an issue.
How about if they're taking an AS degree?
I believe that is only for the AA. I'm waiting for the specifics from the legislation to see where we are on the AS, so I don't have that answer for you this morning. I will get that for you.
So they would need 30 hours of general ed as this, in addition, they would need their foreign language requirement on top of the 30 hours?
Correct, if they have not met that in high school.
This is a difficult item for every college. This college has an additional ethics requirement that's in ours, so we have even fewer degrees of freedom in making those determinations.
And just from a practical standpoint, you take a 30-year-old student coming back to school, and they're trying to get their AA degree, and you tell them that you need two semesters of Spanish or French, and I'm not sure if our competitors, the University of Phoenix, has the same type of requirement, and a student will measure, do I want to take two semesters of French, or do I want to go and pay a higher fee to University of Phoenix and go there and not have to take this foreign language requirement? It's very unfriendly to our students.
Mr. Chair.
I think you're going to have, it's going to bring up an issue where we're going to have to do more remediation for that student, because you talk about a 30-year-old trying to learn Spanish, or maybe they had it, maybe they didn't have a little bit of it in high school, but if you're not utilizing that in your everyday work, I wouldn't see why we'd make that a requirement, but, so that's just like yourself.
Mr. Gibbons, I really think people won't even register. I don't even think people, you know, they'll look at another option.
I think you're right.
Yeah.
We will, there may be other options for us to do. I mean, I would, nothing would make me happier for people to decide there's an outcome standard that can give us plenty of flexibility to have students reach that outcome standard. It may be very different than sitting in a 16-week course, three mornings a week for 50 minutes. There's a lot of ways to meet that standard and what it entails. I don't know that they've given us that flexibility yet. This one is very, very, very difficult.
Well, we need to be prepared, though, because if they do register, it's going to be, you know, it may be a tough road to toe for some of them.
The work that we're doing to understand where our demand is for courses, what students need as they go through, we've got a project that's going great guns, that would restrict some students' ability to register. Our ability to predict student needs going forward in over a two- or three-year period is going to be very difficult, and I want to be sure that I'm clear, it will greatly impact our going-forward, future hiring plans for faculty. We don't know what to do. Mr. Burke?
I'm not sure if it passed. Can you please tell us? I was told that, that because of the special status that Florida State and University of Florida received, that an AA degree transferred to those does not, you're not, no longer accepted automatically as a junior. You could be accepted, but you're not accepted as a junior, and there's a potential for courses to be taken over again. Is there truth to that?
That was the dialogue. I'll have to find what the final exact language was. I think they can set their own standards, is the way that came out, for transfer, and I don't know exactly what that means. Let me, let me...
And I thought the net result, as it was explained to me, basically, you would have to add on a semester up there to, it won't be a two-year program. It would be two and a half year minimum if you're going up there, which is, again, a deterrent to our students to start off with us.
Can I just get a better answer for you?
Yeah.
I'm not prepared on that today.
You know, get, Mr. Burke, the way I heard it was that you could add an extra semester after they set their standards, and I think it did pass.
Yeah. Another one, not particularly friendly to community college transfer students, and I think everybody made it with that, with that understanding. Mr. Chairman, that's what I have on the non-budget, state board, excuse me, legislative stuff. We'll continue to refine those. I'll send everybody the 40-page report. You know, there's a lot of it that's arcane to all of us, and I'll try to continue to distill the four or five key items for us. They were part of today's discussion, okay? Ed Woodruff has done a spectacular job for us, and this came in as I was leaving for the Billy Joel concert last night, so...
Didn't take it with you.
Thank you. 8B?
8B, the Trade Adjustment and Assistance for the Community College Act. I just wanted to give the board a heads-up, that working with my good friend, President David Armstrong from Broward College, and really in recognition of the really good work that Brad Jenkins has done through his engineering tech program here at the college, David, the feds have put forward a $500 million program where colleges or consortiums can request grants of up to $15 million, called the Trade Adjustment Act. It is intended to support community college training programs in certifications and ready-to-work kinds of things. David and I, working through some existing structures, were able to put together a consortium of 11 colleges across the state, all of whom have very good, on-the-ground manufacturing and manufacturing-related programs. We met with the, we invited down and held a one-day workshop with the Manufacturing Institute, which is a barely arms-length relationship to the National Association of Manufacturers. We met with the Florida Manufacturing Association. We have met with the Workforce Florida Board. We've met with some key legislative leaders. Jackie Skrit of our team is pulling together that grant with the 11 other. I think that this can be a game-changer in Pinellas County, that based on what we have, if we could get some funding for instrumentation, some additional curriculum, and then perhaps even some teaching support, we could greatly expand opportunities for our citizens to qualify for a range of certified jobs in the manufacturing area, all of which pay living wages and wages that you can start a family on. So we're pretty excited. We've had a lot of good encouragement. It's big, and it'll be moving fast. The grant goes in in May, but if you hear anything, we are working it as hard as we know how. It follows up, by the way, Mr. Burke, with our meeting with, in Bill Young's office, and we've got a legislative strategy for Washington, DC. I'm very excited about this opportunity.
Thanks for your...
Mr. Chairman, if I have it, I have two, one or two other important items. I'd like to pass out, and I know you hate and I hate getting things on the fly, but the issue of evaluation, and again, as, if I refer to this as the Once and Future Board, we certainly want, is that my code? There are two or three parts of evaluation. One is to evaluate me, and we have done this generally a little later in the year. My suggestion is that we start that process right away, and at least then at the April Board meeting, have that done. You know, there's a lot of gallows humor about the governor reappointing and not reappointing and doing all of that. I want all of you to be reappointed. We'll have a mess on our hands if that doesn't happen in the whole evaluation process, among other things. So, Mr. Chairman, with your guidance, the process is pretty straightforward, and I think we're probably at our highest watermark here on that evaluation, and certainly, I'd stand ready to be evaluated in that way. I was asked to include some additional loop on our support for each of you in your travels, professional development, board support, and those sorts of things. We ought to do the hygiene, are you getting what you need from us in addition to my civic corporate, community, and college leadership? And then I just recall that in a fairly passing comment, but not an unimportant comment, when we had the board workshop in December over in the collaborative labs, there was at least reference to the board undertaking some sort of self-evaluation, and if we want to do that. I don't think we can do that by April, but if you want me to get started working on that, I need a little more guidance as to what you would like me to do on that, so. Mr. Chairman, thank you for indulging me here.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Gibbons?
Thank you, Dr. Law, for bringing this forward. I think the evaluation process is critical for the success of the college, not just yours, but evaluating the board as well, if there are other models that we could look at to see if we, as a board, could be evaluated. I would always like to know whether we're providing you and the faculty and staff of the college, in our actions, are we moving the college in the right direction? I get some, you can't get that kind of feedback by just making decisions and sitting up here without actually getting some type of evaluation process put in place. And then also, I like the fact that, I appreciate the fact that you're brought forward. We need to evaluate our, I think it should just be the chairperson and the president should evaluate our support staff on a yearly basis as well, so we know, and we can give our feedback to the chairperson, whoever that may be, and so that we, that person, that individual could also evaluate that person or individual, so that we know, so that that individual knows what they need to step up their game, or they're doing a great job. So I like both of those, and I thank you for bringing them forward.
Dr. Law, so based on your comments, we're going to try to accelerate this evaluation, and did I understand you, that you would like to have it completed and presented at the April Board meeting?
I'll speak to all the sentences. Everybody who is in the room today is approved at least through the April Board meeting, okay? Now, if the governor reappoints you, we, if this week we get a letter from the governor saying everybody's reappointed, I may say, let's just give ourselves the luxury of some time. If he does nothing, though, I would like to get started on the evaluation process, to at least take everybody's input in the event some are not reappointed. I don't, I don't know any other way to dance around.
And I understand that.
And Dr. Law and I talked to these folks yesterday. There is no definitive plan to reappoint everybody. They don't know what they're doing. They're starting from scratch. You're just obviously not taking...
And just for a point of clarification, I believe I'm good through March of next year.
I'd be delighted for you to be the sole evaluator, Mr. Chairman, if that's your proposal, okay?
I can't speak for the rest of you, but...
We're all on the hot seat. Does this require an action?
I think it's just the direction of the board.
Yeah, and I think this is good. And so are we going to get some material sent to us? This is last year's evaluation.
And we'll update it. I'll get working as soon as I can on a self-evaluation.
So if you could have staff send us evaluations, current evaluations, with some instructions on how to get them back and tabulated, that would be great.
But, Mr. Chair, I'm more specifically speaking to, does it require action for, because we are changing the process, that the chairperson and the president will be evaluating our support staff, and then also... evaluating our support staff, and then also bringing some type of evaluation process back for the board to evaluate itself along with staff?
What support staff do you refer to?
Well, we only have one, we have Laura, so.
Okay.
I just don't think it'd be fair for all of us to be trying to evaluate one person. So if she's already evaluated by the president, she supports us. I think in fairness, the president and the, if we have any complaints or anything good to say, either way, we should give that to the chairperson or provide it to the president toward the chair, and then they evaluate that person.
I'll look to counsel. Do we need action on that? Okay, great. Mr. Burke, did you have your hand up?
Mine's a legal question, too. I'm for the concept that Mr. Gibbons has suggested. Are we allowed to send a communication just to the chair?
You have to send it to the...
Yet, you can send it directly to the chair if there's not any discussion between board members.
Okay.
Each board member can provide their, their statement to the chair.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, let me, let's, may I make, let me get working on the existing process and get it in place, and then I'll do a little more homework on the board evaluation itself. I don't think I can get both those done in the next month, okay? I've got a couple of other things.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, just one other thing. I sent everybody a little bit of bragging rights. You know, when you get a clean audit, you got to share it and pay respect to the staff.
This was good.
I was going to say, if you read it and I missed something, trust me, I read it twice. Just for...
Just so you know, Mr. President, the auditor general sends this directly.
I, I, I'm happy.
To make you aware that they...
When it's this kind of audit, I want to make doubly sure how it works. I don't want it to get caught in your spam filter or anything else. Now, let me say this, the, just for completeness, there's a financial audit each year, and then there's an operational audit that will, they're doing the operational audit as we speak, and that's the internal processes and internal controls and those sorts of things. But again, the financial audit is, reflects all of our commitment to our citizens and taxpayers to, to take care that the funds are well-managed, well accounted for, and well-done. So thank you all for your guidance. Mr. Chairman, I will close with one other thing. I don't know, I haven't seen what all is, but once again, this college has a Coca-Cola scholar, which is the number-one student in the state of Florida, Alastair Glover, who has, I think, been to these, these board meetings. We'll get Alastair here. Alastair is one of those great students who we worked with on putting together the financial management, financial responsibility plan. He is really world-class and has been a great help to me. But we had nine, nine, all Florida students recognized, and Alastair is the number-one student in the state.
That's great.
Followed his last year's success. So Taj has got the formula down just right now. Very nice, very nice.
Beautiful. Anything else, sir?
No, thank you for your indulgence.
Any future agenda items anyone would like to bring up at this point?
Mr. Chairman, we will go to Allstate next, next month.
I'm getting there.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. Any other future agenda items?
I would appreciate if Mr. Gibbons would tell us about the, the new childcare program we're offering during board meetings.
I'm sorry, my son had a meltdown at school today, so he wanted to see his dad. This is Weston Gordon Gibbons, my son. Say hello. And his godfather's here, too, Mr. Brett.
I would like to offer a couple of comments before we close, and recognize and thank Dr. Carney for your leadership and for your compassion in all of the efforts that you have made to guide your campus and this college through this very tragic time in the passing of Ms. Osterhout. And I have been reading and hearing about the efforts that the Tarpon Campus, under your leadership, has been making, and I heard some of them again today. And I just want to, on behalf of this board and the college family, thank you for your leadership and your compassion that you've shown to the family. Thank you very much. Our next meeting, at the urging of Mr. Burke, we're going to move around a little bit. We're going to be down with Mr. Brock, down at the Allstate Center, April 17th, in the De Soto Room, 103. So we'll look forward to seeing you there at 8:30 on the 17th. We are adjourned. Thank you very much.